Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting here at Ashland Town Hall on the second floor Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down, however, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. On our posted agenda, there is a link for the Zoom conference as well as a telephone number to dial in by telephone. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present on Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. First item on the agenda this evening is a continuance of the public hearing, the 55 West Union Street, a 40B comprehensive permit. The petition is from 55 West Union LLC requesting a comprehensive permit per Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one four-story elevator building, offering a total of 116 rental units, including 87 units priced at market and 29 units income restricted in perpetuity to households earning at or below 80% of the area median income. On 4.9 acres, the property in question is located at 55 West Union Street, Assessors Map 19, Lot 62, in the Ashland Commercial Highway CH District. The hearing was opened on August 26th and last appeared on October 14th, and they are here again this evening. So if the representative for the applicant who's going to just talk tonight, step up to the mic, please. Identify yourself and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is here as well, John Dudley. And for this evening, we have brought our civil engineer to go through his comments to the civil peer review.
Fine, thank you very much, and I hope you're more satisfied with your spot on the agenda than you were at the last meeting when you were last, unfortunately.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We have not had a response from our peer reviewer on the stormwater to the most recent reply that your civil engineer did to the original stormwater. So it looked like, from what I, if I can interpret our peer reviewers, I'm sorry, your engineer's response to our peer reviewer, it looked like you did just about everything our peer reviewer suggested, and there might have been one area, I think, that there was a suggestion that it maybe wasn't necessary or whatnot. So I'm not sure where we go with that because it's obviously, the stormwater is a technical area, and without a peer review comment back, I'm not sure...
So he's not, your peer reviewer is not, is not present this evening?
We have not, we unfortunately have not had a response from our peer reviewer on your engineer's response, response on the stormwater, nor have we received reports from any of the other peer reviewers that we have reached out to and requested a review for to share with you and to move forward, and it's very frustrating for us.
That's very disappointing because...
We're not very sure why, it is very disappointing.
When we met two weeks ago, it was our expectation that, that the peer reviewer would be present, you know, this evening so that we could have a dialogue. I think that your interpretation is correct, that Vito has been able to address most of the comments provided. There is one area that needs some soil testing, and that's going to happen on Monday, but again, we're, we're all here, we thought we were going to talk about it. I don't know if you want to hear from him or, or how you want to handle it.
Well, you know, it might be helpful if we, if he would like to address the, let me just pull out the report, and I can find the one, the one item that I had flagged as there seeming to be some potential disagreement. And for some reason, I'm not finding it. I'm sorry? Yeah. Well, perhaps rather than have me just flail through my paperwork without finding what I was looking for, perhaps you can highlight what seemed to be the one still thing that you were questioning.
Um, Vito Colano with Connorstone Engineering. It may, well, I know there was an outstanding issue with the soil testing, so we still need to do that, just to confirm soils, groundwater elevations in the basin, so we will do that on, I believe, Monday unless things get delayed with some weather. And the only one that maybe you might have been questioning could have been the exfiltration rates. There was one comment that, we kind of questioned it, and basically how that's calculated, what areas of the bottom of the basin we can use. So we just, you know, question that, and we'll just hear what their input is, and actually, some of that might get clarified via the soil testing, too, because we're going to do some exfiltration permeability testing while we're out there, too, just to clarify any of that that may come up in the future. I didn't think that there were much else that we didn't address or comply with.
No, I will say, I, for one, was very, very pleased with your response to our peer reviewer and enacting the items that he had suggested. It helps not to have a battle over stormwater, and we're in agreement on that.
Yeah, one of the big things we did, kind of the major revision, was originally we were asking for a waiver from one of the local stormwater bylaw requirements, and we just made a modification to one of the basins, so we complied with that. So now we don't need any waivers or requesting any waivers from the local bylaw.
Okay, good.
So we figured that would be an easier way, cleaner way to get through the process.
Excellent. Okay. I have no further questions. Brian, any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
And Stu, any questions?
No, sir.
And Ryan, how about you?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you.
One thing, and perhaps if... No, that's okay, I'm not sure we need it. Do you want to come back up to the stand just for a moment?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
I think, again, I don't think we can do much else on stormwater tonight, but it sounds like the issue is practically resolved.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
We hope so.
The one item I think we might be able to address a little bit at least is on sustainability. I know at the last meeting, there was a, someone from the audience had questioned about sustainable items and what sustainability items were being done with the project, and in fact, we got a, an email from someone in, I believe it was late September, raising four items, and I know you had reached out, I think, to the, to try and contact the woman that had been on the...
Sustainability committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I didn't know whether there was any further contact on that, but have you seen the, the four items that had been submitted to, to us?
Yep, so we responded to that on September 24th and submitted that to Jasmine from our architect from Studio Can, and we gave design considerations, performance testing, as well as landscaping items that we were going to work on. It's just too early in the project, and there's too much uncertainty around solar these days as to what kind of benefits are going to exist in the future. It's just too early in the design stage to be able to commit to something like that. But I can run through the design, I can run through each one of those bullet points if you'd like me to do that.
I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So under design considerations, the building envelope will use high-energy insulation, advanced air sealing, and high-performance windows to reduce heating and cooling demand while improving comfort. It will utilize energy-efficient mechanical systems, including in-unit air handling systems and hot water heaters. Pretty much every area of the development is going to use LED lighting and Energy Star rated appliances to reduce electricity consumption. The roof and electrical infrastructure will be designed to accommodate future solar PV installation, aligning with the project's long-term sustainability goals, and the electrical infrastructure will be designed to accommodate EV charging readiness for 20% of the parking spaces. And again, this is the architect, so I'm not really great at this, a final HERS, H-E-R-S, rating report will be completed to demonstrate that the project meets stretch code compliance through air duct leak, leaking testing, thermal envelope analysis, and an assessment of the building's mechanical systems. So those are kind of everything going on in and around the building. On the landscaping, the majority of the plantings are going to be drought tolerant and native to the area, therefore needing less water. We will be using drip irrigation, which again is a very efficient way for the plants until they reach maturity. Once they reach maturity, you can basically stop doing that, but you've still got it in case something dies along the way, kind of thing. And then again, the exterior lighting is going to be LED. So pretty much looking at most of the different kinds of performance standards today to reduce our, our, our footprint, if you will, our carbon footprint on the project with what we know today.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very, very much for that. I don't have any questions. Brian, any questions at this point?
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
Stu?
Not at this time, sir.
And Ryan, how about you?
Not at this time.
At this point, I'm not sure what else we can accomplish this evening, and my apologies on that. We are going to pick up speed at our next hearing, but that leads me to a discussion. Our normal hearing date would be the second Tuesday in November, which is November 11th, which is Veterans Day, and we are not going to meet on Veterans Day. We tried to find a date that week where we could meet, but unfortunately, council has prior commitments in the evening on both that Monday and that Wednesday, so it looks...
Okay, yeah, I had the 10th down from when we last spoke.
So I think, unfortunately, that turned out not to be, not to be possible.
Okay.
So we're looking at the 18th of November, and we would follow that up with our regular meeting on the fourth Tuesday, which would be the 25th, so hopefully at that point we would have, it gives us a little extra time for the, our peer reviewers to get their reports in, but, and you to have an opportunity to review them, and it also will give us two dates that are fairly close, close together to make some significant progress on the project.
Okay, so the 18th?
The 18th.
Okay, and that's three weeks, which again, hopefully I agree, if we can get those, everything in this week, we can turn them around as fast as we can, at least hit one of those subjects.
We're doing the best we can.
Okay, and then you said the 25th. I'm going to have to figure that one out. I might have to be remote because I have another meeting that night, but I will see.
Okay, I mean, we, we will work with you on that.
Yeah, we've got plenty of team members, you know, on that one, so thank you very much.
Okay. That being said, someone wished to make a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, November 18th at 7:00.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Ryan. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you very much. This matter is continued until November 18th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a continuance of public hearing involving 61 Waverly Street, a 40B comprehensive permit request, and the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing to hear the petition from the Gutierrez Company requesting a comprehensive permit for Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one multifamily five-story building containing 226 apartment units and 391 parking spaces. Property in question is located at 61 Waverly Street, Assessors Map 15, Lot 12, in the Ashland WMUSD, Wildwood Mixed Use Special District D zoning. Hearing was opened in this matter on March 25th, 2025, has continued over multiple hearing dates, and most recently on October 14th of 2025. The applicant had granted an extension of time to October 28th for us to complete the hearing, which is tonight, and I believe there was a more recent suggestion that the, there would be another, there could be another extension date granted if, if need be. Is that right?
We did receive an extension, a letter of extension till November 10th.
Till November 10th?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Lopez, do you want to take the stance, not the sand, excuse me, my, my, my former attorney day is coming out there, the podium, that's a better word for it. Okay, well, let's talk a little bit about what we're going to be able to accomplish today. We reviewed the waiver request at the last hearing, went over all of them, I believe, to just sort of get a, an idea of what was being requested and what reasons for it, et cetera, and our intention tonight is to vote on these waiver requests. We will also intend, assuming we can complete that task, and I see no reason why we can't, we would invite the public for one final public comment session before we move to close the hearing, and that's what I expect to accomplish, we will be able to accomplish tonight, and then we will come back at our next hearing date, and we will start the deliberations and the discussion on the hearing decision with all of the conditions, et cetera. Have I spoken accurately on that, counsel?
That's fair.
Okay, thank you, good. I didn't want to forget something, which is always a possibility. So that's sort of what we're, what we're planning tonight, if that meets with your approval, and I guess even if it doesn't, that's what we're planning to do, but I see no reason why we can't accomplish it. And what I, what, we've talked with counsel about what the easiest and perhaps quickest way to address each and every waiver and vote is to perhaps do something like what we do at town meetings when we're reviewing the budget and the various budget items. We basically put a hold on something if we have a question about it or has an issue on it. Otherwise, if it's just something that we're going, we're in agreement on, we'll just go over and then at the end come back and deal with all of those that we don't have an issue with, and any that if anyone's raised a question about or has an issue with, we will talk about them at that point. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. And is that clear to members of the board?
Yep.
Stu, Ryan? Okay, good. And just to make sure that we're dealing with the same waiver requests, I've got a, a letter from you dated October 9th of 2025 addressed to me, attached to it are requests that look like one, two, three, four pages. Those are the waivers that we're dealing with, correct?
Yes, dated October 9th, yep.
And what I'm going to do is we'll go down the, starting with the first section number, which is 5.3.11, and I'll ask, let me back up a step, getting ahead of myself as usual. Because we're going to be voting on these waivers, we're a three-member board, so we have to choose a third member. Brian Forrestall and myself are members, and we vote. We have two associate members, one of which will be a voting member on this, for this decision, and what we have been doing is we typically rotate so that the next associate member in line is the next one to be assigned to be a voting member. Stu, I believe you're the next one in line to be a voting member, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for purposes of this hearing decision, voting members will be John Trefethan, Brian Forrestall, and Stu Siegel. So for each of you, again, as I read the section number and requirement, if there's a hold, speak up, otherwise we'll go on to the next, the next item. First item is number 5.3.11, requirement monument signs to be not greater than three feet tall and 12 square feet. Any problems? Hearing nothing, moving on to 5.4.4 and 5.4.5, requirement required number and spacing of trees. Any comments or problems, questions? Hearing nothing, moving on to 5.7.3, parenthesis, one, close parenthesis. No grading or construction on slopes greater than 3:1 without a special permit from the planning board. Any question or problems with that one? Moving on, having heard nothing, 5.8.2, site alteration special permit from the planning board. Any question or objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to Section 8.6.69, parenthesis, C, close parentheses. For buildings containing only residential uses in Area D in Area E, no building or structure shall exceed a height of three stories unless allowed under the special permit conditions of this section. Any problems with that one or questions? Moving on to the next one, having heard nothing, 8.6.610, parenthesis, A, close parenthesis. A multifamily project is limited to 115 units except as noted here and after. A multifamily project must set aside a minimum-sized area of 80,000 square feet for commercial development. Any objection to that? Having heard nothing, moving on to 8.6.610, parenthesis, B. Bedroom limitation does not explicitly allow studio units. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.7, parenthesis, 2. No development and required setbacks and is approved by the planning board. Any objection to that? Having heard nothing, moving on to 8.6.8 and 5.1.2. Parking and loading requirements, two spaces per dwelling unit are required. Any questions or objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.10.7. Outdoor lighting fixtures shall be mounted no higher than 15 feet except as taller fixtures requested and approved, interiding by the planning board. Any objection to that one? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.16. Submission of a site development plan to the planning board. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.17. Planning board decision. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.18. Security and work performed. Any question or objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 8.6.19. Development scheduling. Any objection to that? Moving on, hearing nothing, moving on to 9.1. Enforcement. Any question or objection to that? Moving on, having heard nothing, moving on to 9.3. Special permits. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 9.4. Site plan review. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing, moving on to 9.6. Design plan review. Any objection to that?
They talked about holding that one for conversation. So has submitted an email with respect to this one? I think it might be worth...
Oh, okay, fine. Very good.
Reflecting on that email.
Very good. Okay, I put a red dot on that one. Section 9.7, rate of development bylaw. Any objection to that? Hearing nothing. Waivers from stormwater management and illicit discharges and connections. Local regulation, Chapter 244, I'm sorry, 247, stormwater management and illicit discharges and connections. I will put a hold on that.
Same reason.
Waivers from the local wetland protection bylaw and regulations. Chapter 280, wetlands protection bylaw, and Chapter 348. I will put a hold on that. Waivers from stormwater management regulations, Chapter 343, stormwater management. I will put a hold on that. Okay. I believe that completes all the waiver requests.
It does. Do you want to, Mr. Chairman, just make it clear to those listening and to the other board members that ones that we didn't hold, per this straw poll that you just did, are ... board members that ones that we didn't hold, per this straw poll that you just did, are acceptable and would be approved by the board when we do go to vote?
Right, we will take a formal vote. But that's understood, that there were no, no objections or holds placed on anything until we got to storm water and wetlands protection.
Okay.
Okay. First item, let's, under that, let's look at the local regulation, chapter 247. Storm water management and illicit discharges and connections. And counsel, would you like to lead us on that?
If that's your pleasure, I'm happy to, Mr. Chairman. And so we received some correspondence, I think there was a couple of exchanges, and I just wanted to pause on this one, to make sure that the board and the applicant had the same understanding of what this waiver was requesting. And we did discuss it at the last meeting a little bit. And so I think the concern with respect to the storm water waiver request had to do with some of the data that the storm water bylaw requires. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just gonna make this statement, and you tell me if it's an inaccurate or accurate statement. The applicant provided an email actually clarifying that our storm water calculations, as reviewed and approved by Hancock, are based on the NOAA-Atlas 2014 precipitation data. We stated this in our May 20th response letter to the Conservation Commission, so we do comply with that. And so I believe, and we covered this a little bit at the last meeting, the waiver request is procedural in nature, in that the applicant is not looking to file a separate application. That's the whole comprehensive part of the comprehensive permit, that this board stands in those shoes. But the applicant is otherwise gonna comply with the substantive requirement that the NOAA-Atlas 2014 precipitation data be used.
Correct.
Characterizing this correctly?
Sounds correct to me. And just to be clear, that will be a condition in the hearing decision?
Right, and so this is the, the next point. And so for the benefit of the board members and the applicant, when I, I'll add a new column to this, this table here. And the fourth column will be board's decision. And so in some cases, it'll just say waiver granted. But in this case, it will clarify that the waiver is granted as to the procedural requirements. However, the applicant has affirmed in writing to the zoning board that it's complying with the substantive performance requirement. And so that's what the board's decision, I would suggest, look like when we write it.
Okay. Just to be clear, that's acceptable to me, and I think we ought to check with the other two voting members, just to make sure they're satisfied with that. Brian, is that okay with you?
Sounds like a good plan.
And Stu, how about you?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, great. So that takes care of the first waiver request from storm water management and illicit discharge. Moving on to chapter 280. Wetlands protection bylaw in chapter 348. And where do we stand on that?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
By all means, please.
I believe we had discussed at the last meeting what the sort of nature of this request was. And while it was predominantly procedural, there were two areas. One in particular, buffer zone to the, the vernal pool, that was of concern, and the applicant was requesting a substantive waiver of that requirement. But there was a nuance to that, because again, if I'm misstating anything, I fully invite you to correct me. That there weren't any proposed structures, but there might be some proposed work within that area. And so the applicant, obviously erring on the side of caution, was seeking a waiver to that. Am I on the right track so far?
Yes.
Okay. And so we received some correspondence from the Conservation Commission, and then we've had some discussion with their agent on this. And one thing I would like to suggest to the board and to the applicant for their consideration is, if the board is inclined to grant this waiver, it grant it only insofar as is necessary for the project. And so if we were sitting in a sort of wetlands permitting context, if with this, with a ConCom, we would look at what kind of guardrails to put on a condition like that. We wouldn't just grant a, we wouldn't necessarily just grant a blanket waiver. And so because you're sitting as the comprehensive permit granting authority, you are standing in the shoes of the Conservation Commission right now. And so one condition that the Conservation Commission might consider, if an applicant was requesting a waiver of this, and I'm just gonna read this, and I could provide this to you in writing subsequently. If the board decided to grant this waiver, I would suggest that you condition that to require that erosion control devices shall not block passage between uplands and vernal pools between the dates of March 1st and June 2nd, nor between September 1st and October 15th. And if soils will not be stabilized during these periods, that temporary stabilization measures shall be designed to provide a gradual slope or berm over which amphibians may pass. And there's some more clarification information on that. And so I know that's a lot to hear for the first time, but I, I put it out there because I'd like to give the board a chance to think about that, but also a chance for the applicant to take this back and consider whether or not that's something that might be acceptable to them. If the, if the applicant is okay with, with that sort of limitation on the waiver, then there's an agreement, and we might not have any problem with this one. But the applicant is hearing this for the first time, and I would expect, would want to review the actual language that I'm holding in my hand, and provide us a formal response later. So I will, if it's okay with the board, provide this after the meeting tonight, and then we can, I think, take that up. But that one would be a conditional waiver, in that case. And again, I don't understand the wetland sense. I'm not a wetland scientist, and so I, I don't want to pretend to be in this case. But I believe the intent is that, just because of the habitat nature of the vernal pool, that certain guardrails can be put, not metaphorical guardrails, but, so that it functions still adequately as a corridor for amphibians. And so if the work and structures aren't actually encroaching on it, there still are just some protective measures that can be taken, that hopefully, but you'll have to confirm this, don't actually affect your project. And so the intent would be, if they don't affect your project, but they protect the vernal pool a little bit more, then maybe it's something we do reach an agreement on. So just putting that out there for consideration.
And if I may, just respond to that and provide a little more clarification and context for the waiver. It, it's really even more kind of basic than that, in the sense that, right now, the wetland, the local wetland bylaw makes the presumption that a potential vernal pool is actually a vernal pool, and, and that is just that, it's a presumption. And so there may not be any habitat there to protect, it's, it hasn't been, you know, And in any event, I mean, to that extent, designing the project as we've designed it respects the 25-foot no-disturb buffer, which is also part of the wetland bylaw, but with respect to this particular item within the local bylaw, that's where we're seeking relief, which is a 100-foot buffer. And only to the extent that we need it for the project, the way that it's, as it's designed.
Yep, I understand that. So that's my comment on chapter 280. Wetlands protection bylaw in chapter 348.
I, I also have, Mr. Chair, our wetland scientist here today. I don't know if maybe we had a moment to confer on the proposed language, it might be something that we could review this evening, and perhaps...
It's up to the board, if the board's amenable?
That would be fine. I mean, I'd like to be able to wrap up all the waiver requests this evening, and not have something...
It's back to see now.
...handing over, but, okay.
You just give us a minute to...
By all means.
Review it. These two are the same.
And John.
Yep.
The design plan review.
Yep.
So I've just reviewed quickly, and I think we're, we're okay generally with the language. We might propose a couple of tweaks, just for clarification, but conceptually, I think this is very workable.
Okay, now, if we don't have the exact language to vote upon this evening, we, can we still vote on it, or do we have to...
I would suggest that you, you vote to approve it, subject to town councils.
Oops. We've got a late addition.
We're just gonna make, just wanted to clarify, so in the first sentence, where it says erosion control devices shall not block passage between uplands, and then we would insert there, within 100 feet of the, of the buffer zone. Just to clarify that, those are the uplands that we're talking about, not in other locations.
Right. Not all the way to Boston.
Right.
Yes. Understood. So to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest if the vote, or the board is amenable, that you just approve it, subject to town council's finalization of the agreed-upon language.
Okay, having heard that, is that acceptable to you, Brian?
It's acceptable to me.
And Stu, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. It's acceptable to me as well. And, I've lost my, here we go. Final waiver request is chapter 343. Storm water management. I don't believe we have covered that.
Mr. Chair, it's part of, it's part of the procedural, same procedural...
Same procedural issue?
Yes, just, it's the regulation and the bylaw, they, they go together.
Okay.
And then 9.6, on page 3.
Yep, that, going back to the design plan review. And on that, we have language that was suggested by the applicant, and I'm going to read it for the public and also for my fellow board members. It reads, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit to the town an updated set of architectural drawings incorporating any updates to the design that the applicant in its sole and absolute discretion shall make specifically in response to the list of design notes provided to the applicant attached as Exhibit A. Submission of the updated drawing shall satisfy this condition." And the draw, the design notes are dated 9/18/25, and they consist, consist of 10 items. And that is proposed as a condition to the waiver request of the design plan review. I am content with that. Brian?
I'm not sure I fully understand what, what you're trying to propose. Can you dumb it down for me?
Well, they've, the applicant has requested a waiver from the design plan review under section 9.6 of our bylaws.
Okay.
And the vote would be to grant that request, but place as a condition on the hearing decision, what I just, the language I just read into, into the record.
Yeah. If I may propose a clarification, the, we are requesting the waiver from the design plan review, but that is also procedural, because the design plan review is held, done through the planning board, not, not the ZBA. So it's not, again, like with all of the other waivers that are with respect to something that is issued through the planning board, this, it's not, we wouldn't go to the planning board for design plan review.
Okay, so if we were to grant that waiver, it's simply procedural in nature, that you don't have to go to the planning board to have site review?
Correct. I'm not, I'm not backing away from the proposal that we made, I'm just clarifying that...
The proposal would be placed as a condition on the decision.
Correct.
Is that satisfied, counsel?
May I just make one suggestion?
Sure.
And it's the board's decision ultimately, but, and, and I understand the intent here. I mean, one thing all applicants want is certainty. They don't want their plans to change radically after they've gone through this process, and, you know, it creates a lot of difficulties on the, the backend of things. But I would suggest, including just a couple of words after incorporating, and just, in good faith and to the extent practicable, just to place some duty on the applicant to give it a try. As it's written right now, and I understand why it's written this way, it's just their sole unchallengeable discretion to make any changes. And so they don't have to really do anything. And so by adding good faith and to the extent practicable, in their opinion, it at least puts a little bit of a burden on them to try, to see what could be incorporated and what can't be, and make a determination as to why the things that can't be, can't be. And so just to at least go through those motions, to go through the list and attempt, there's some value in that all by itself. So I would just suggest we add the words, "good faith" and "to the extent practicable."
And that will be added to the condition, or to the...
To the suggested language of the condition.
Condition, okay.
That's my suggestion.
So we don't have to decide that tonight?
No, because that would be a condition in the actual...
Right, okay, good. Makes sense.
If I may, Mr. Chair and members, I understand the, the intent behind that additional language. I, I think we would be okay with "in good faith," because that's certainly how we've operated, how we would operate. I'm concerned with the phrase "practicable" when it comes to some of the things that are actually included on that list. Some, some of the suggestions are, for example, you know, can you change this color from white to, you know, from white as it's shown to gray? Someone could say, well, that's, it's practicable to change it from white to gray, but we might, you know, our architect, our design might say, really, we think it's white here, all the reasons why. And it just becomes one of these things where, you know, you like this color, I like that color. So I wouldn't, for that reason, I wouldn't want to get caught up in what's practicable or not. Maybe I'm open to other language that kind of gets to where the board would be comfortable without fully making some of those decisions potentially be just contentious, because, you know, it could be practicable to do something, but might be inconsistent.
And may I make a suggestion to the board in light of that? This will ultimately be, if the board approves the Conferment, a condition of the Conferment, and it's often our practice to circulate a draft. And so there may be some wordsmithing that we can do here that, that may resolve this. So I don't know if we need to make any kind of decision on this right now. I wanted to put it in play tonight, so we can have a conversation about it. And then maybe through the drafting process, I can follow up with the applicant, see what we can work on.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Stu, any questions?
No, I've understood the explanation.
Okay, excellent. So, that being...
I think that's it.
That concludes the... That concludes the list of waivers. And would it be appropriate at this point for the three members to take a vote on the waivers?
Yes, you can... I would probably characterize it as a straw poll, because your ultimate vote is gonna come later, when we have a final draft comprehensive permit for you to vote.
Okay.
So, a straw poll as to where you're at with it, based on the discussion tonight, I think is fine.
Okay, well, that being said, having heard that we would be doing a straw poll, Brian, are you in favor of the waivers that we have discussed?
Yes.
And Stu, how about you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I, John Trefethan, am in favor of those waivers as well. Okay, that being said, we want to allow public comment before we entertain a motion to close the hearing. Okay. Israel, you can step down, I think, and we will open it up before we close the hearing for one final time for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard, please line up along the wall. If there's anybody online that wishes to speak, please so indicate. And Jasmine, our dedicated town planner, who I neglected to introduce once again at the start of the meeting, and she will let you in, but we'll start with the person who's at the podium.
Good evening, Claudia Bennett, 9 Sandstone Way. I just sort of have a procedural question. So, now that you've taken a straw poll, if additional information were to come forward on anything that you had tonight agreed with, is... How does that work? What happens with that additional information?
Once we close the hearing, I don't believe we can entertain any additional information. All the information, by closing the hearing, we're making a determination that we have received adequate information to allow us to make a decision. So, that will close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the remaining part of the process will be, we have 40 days in which to draft and approve a hearing decision with conditions, but which we don't get any additional information from the applicant or from the public.
And even, what if something changed that wasn't so today, but was the case in three weeks?
Well, I guess I suppose if somebody blew up the site...
I wasn't quite thinking along those lines, but I guess that says it.
Well, I don't quite know what, you know... I don't... I can't speculate on something like that, because I don't quite understand what would change, what would change. Council, can you help me on this?
I'm afraid I'm not gonna be able to help you much. So, the whole point of 180 days in the public hearing is to allow sufficient time for the board to create an evidentiary record. And so, once the board closes that, it closes the evidence and it closes the record. And so, things may happen on the applicant's side, and they could request a modification of the permit, but it's hard to speculate as to what kind of information would be out there that would allow the board to ever do such a thing. It's... There's nothing in the regulations that contemplate that kind of an action. I've seen some decisions, you know, that may, you know, leave the door open if there was something incredibly horrific, and I'm not suggesting...
Yeah, I understand.
Any intent on anybody, but if there was, like, fraud, you know, like, absolute clear fraud, that might be something. But otherwise, I mean, there's an appeal period. And so, if people disagree, and if people don't like a result, or a condition, or a finding, that's why there's an appeal period, to have another forum after this, where people can raise those kinds of concerns. But there's no sort of latent jurisdiction in the zoning board to just reopen a closed public hearing and take more evidence.
Right. And could you just explain for everyone the... What the appeals process looks like?
So, once the zoning board has issued its decision, it gets filed with the town clerk and sent to all the parties. That starts a clock for either the applicant, if they have some objection to the permit, to appeal to the housing appeals committee. It also starts a clock for any other, call them aggrieved parties, parties withstanding, to appeal to the superior court, and they have 20 days to do that. I don't want to give legal advice on that process, that's just not our role.
Yeah, no, I just want the...
But that's the moment when that whole process sort of begins, once that decision is filed with the town clerk.
Okay, and how many days is it for the egregious, potentially egregious party?
Aggrieved. Harmed party, 20 days.
20 days, okay, thank you.
Jasmine, anybody online wish to be heard?
We have two. First is Mark DeSoni.
Okay. Mark, good evening. Can you identify yourself and...
Good evening, Mark DeSoni, 119 Main Street. This is just... This is the unusual kind of way to get a straw vote going on this. What would happen, I know you don't want to do hypotheticals and stuff like that, but how would the board react if the applicant, in the 20 days, has a site... A site design change? Would that make the clock stop, or make the application seal the straw vote of the zoning board?
I think you may be mixing things up about the 20-day period, which was an appeal period after a decision is made and filed with the town clerk. We've taken a straw poll tonight on the waiver requests. Those will be... We will close the hearing tonight, and then we have 40 days in which to draft a decision with conditions, and the waivers will be referenced in that decision, and there'll be a final vote. There'll be three voting members. It doesn't have to be unanimous decision, it's two out of three voting to either approve or deny the decision that's drafted. But that's... The 20-day period isn't involved in that. We have 40 days from the closure of the hearing to file our decision with the town clerk.
Okay, and then I'll be thinking if the applicant, before the 20 days, is up, if they want to go to the planning board and make a site difference, changeover, and then come back to the zoning board, would that influence or stop the clerk to understand that the straw vote has been taken? And if the planning board changes anything, the planning board gets in touch with the zoning board, would that make a mix-up different?
I'm not sure where we're going, Mark. I think we're going down a rabbit hole on this that's not going to be productive. Because you keep referencing 20 days...
And on this is up...
And the 20 days is simply the time after the decision is filed with the town clerk that a party has to appeal the decision.
So, would be up to the end of the 20 days with the zoning board, once the 20 days is up and the straw vote's official, will the applicant be done with the zoning board?
The straw vote is done with the hearing decision, where we'll take a final vote to approve the decision, which will include our rulings on the waivers that we've taken a straw poll on tonight. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, unless there is an appeal by somebody, that will end the zoning board of appeals involvement in the case, unless at some subsequent point, there is a request to modify the decision, which would then come back before the... And that request would have to be by the applicant, I believe. No one else can come back and ask for us to do something. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I see like two other hands up now.
Joan Gonfrady was next.
Good evening, Ms. Gonfrady. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Joan Gonfrady, 1 Shore Road, Ashland, Mass., and I'm on the historical commission, but speaking as an individual resident. I'm a little confused by the straw vote, too, because I'm trying to understand, so, am I to understand that nothing is being conditioned, or do you still have the opportunity to condition after your vote?
The hearing decision that is going to be drafted by council will contain a number of conditions, some of which we've talked about tonight, some of which have been talked about at previous meetings, and will all be included in the hearing decision. The straw poll that we took was just on the waivers. Council said, just to make sure that I'm clear on that.
But I thought the conditions were on the waivers. Is that... Am I... I'm still... I apologize, I'm truly confused.
No, it's not. I don't think we put any...
So, if I understood correctly, you just passed...
Why don't you take it, Brian, and explain it better than I'm struggling to do?
I will try, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, the only thing that was discussed this evening were the list of waivers that were requested by the applicant, not the comprehensive permit decision itself. So, that's a separate document that hasn't been discussed yet. And that document, when we get to it, which will be the next step of this, will include factual findings, it'll include determinations of law, and it'll include pages and pages and pages of conditions. We haven't gotten to that stage yet. The only thing that was discussed tonight were the requested waivers, and that's just one piece of a much bigger puzzle. The rest of it is what comes next.
Okay, all right. I guess I... Okay, I guess the way I understood it was that waivers were, otherwise, they were totally abiding by our bylaws. And so, what I'm hearing is there are other things that may be conditioned besides these waivers. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. There will be many more conditions than the ones just discussed tonight.
Okay, and not just on the four that were put on hold, but on anything else, basically? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't know if it will be...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Nothing, just a procedural issue.
Oh, okay. Okay, anything else, Ms. Gonfrady?
No, I think that's it. I wait for the conditions. Thank you.
You're welcome. I see we have one more person who wishes to be heard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Mignani, 2 Hoppe Lane, speaking as a resident and not as a... Any board member. I have a question, because I was a little confused, Joe, when you mentioned something about the fact that the zoning board wants these, not conditions, but the applicant's waivers were completed, you folks were done, but I... But council has stated differently, that there's a whole other process that needs to be followed. Is that correct?
I don't believe I said that, and if I did, I certainly misspoke. The only time the ZBA's process would be done would be after a hearing decision is voted on, filed with the town clerk, and the 20-day period after that expires, nobody is appealed to the housing agency, then the ZBA basically has done its duty, and there's no further involvement in the matter. But no, we're not done with this matter tonight. We've got a...
Right, you have other... You have another process that you have to follow with the conditions and other...
Correct.
Okay. And that falls under that 40-day window?
Correct.
Is that... Okay. So, if there were any additional requests for conditions, would this be the time for the public to send those to the board as suggestions, or is that not something that is... Would be offered during that timeframe?
It can't be offered during the timeframe, and we are planning, after the public comment period is over tonight, and you were the last public commenter, we're going to make a motion to close the hearing, which would end the period in which we could entertain any additional evidence. Once that happens, we cannot get any additional evidence from the public or from the applicant.
Okay. I appreciate that. Then quickly, if I'm the last one to speak on this, I would hope that cooler heads prevail during this whole process, and at some point, the developer would be amicable to putting money towards or even creating sidewalks along that roadway to help pedestrian traffic. So, that's all I would like to see, if that would be part of the conditions that would go along with that project. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, having seen nobody else to make public comment, is there a motion to close public comment?
Mr. Chair? Oops. I apologize, I just wanted to make one request. I was actually gonna make this request earlier, before the public comment session, but with the board, you know, we've talked about the waivers this evening, we've gone through them, and the board has taken a straw poll. I'd like to request that the board vote to approve the waivers with the caveat that Attorney Winner proposed, where the, you know, the language of the waivers could certainly still be modified, but I think, you know, substantially, the waivers have been discussed and agreed upon, and I think all that's left is just to kind of craft the specific language around them. And I would feel more comfortable if we, the board, voted on the waiver list this evening.
Brian, is there a reason why we can't do that?
And I... Honestly, I thought that that was the intent this evening.
I stood aye.
And you sort of did that, just without a motion.
Okay.
You polled your board members, but I don't have a problem with you doing it by motion. I think that's what the applicant's asking you to do, to kind of formalize that.
He wants it to be formalized, which I can understand.
That's fine.
Okay, that's what I thought we would do.
I mean, just to... Just so the board knows, you're gonna still have to take another vote.
Oh, yeah.
Which will include this vote, so you'll be taking it again.
I get that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would entertain a motion to approve the waivers as we have discussed, subject to any language council may need to use. Somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, if...
Okay, aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Okay. Hopefully, I didn't overstep my bounds on that. Nope, I understand the intent of the motion. Okay. Very good. Next motion would be to close public comment, which is what we were doing before we were so rudely interrupted.
So moved.
For motion to close, okay.
So moved, John.
Second?
I second that.
Thank you. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. And then the final motion, I believe, we need to make a motion that, having heard sufficient evidence in the previous months to make a decision, we close the hearing. Is that the motion I need to make?
That's right.
So moved.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, close the public hearing. Brian made that motion. Is there a second? Okay, close the public hearing. Brian made that motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. This public hearing is then closed. With respect to scheduling for the 40-day period, do we want to have this at our next meeting, on the agenda to discuss, or how do we want to handle that?
It's completely up to the board. Since it's no longer a public hearing, you can put it on your agenda as a normal business item. So, 48 hours notice, and we can meet and start discussing that. So if you want to start it on the 18th, which I think is the next time we're getting together.
I think so. I mean, that's...
Forty days leads you to December 7th from today.
Yeah, so we're only going to have a couple of meetings before we run into that 40-day period expiring. So let's put it on for the 18th of November.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Whacka, can we take a brief recess while we wait for the next group to come in? Thank you. Good evening, and welcome back to the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, continuance of a public hearing involving 10-60 Main Street, a 40B comprehensive permit. This matter, hearing opened on January 7th of this year. We have met multiple days after that, and most recently on October 14th, 2025, when we reviewed the list of waivers that the applicant had requested, and continued to this evening, where we will review the waiver requests once again, and determine whether we have objections to some, or questions about some, et cetera. As we did the previous meeting, Mr. Engler, and I don't know if you were privy to hearing the beginning of it, but what we did was we read the agenda, the waiver request items, and if anybody, any of the voting members had a question or an opposition to it, we put a hold on that one and just went on to the next one. So we would address the issues all at the final, final time. Again, we have to choose a third voting member on this decision. Brian Forstall and myself will, as members, will be voting members. The third member will be one of our two associate members. We rotate them, and I believe next up on the list would be Ryan. So, are you willing to be a voting member on this case?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, that being said, let's start, and make sure we're dealing with the same waiver requests. I'm reading from a form entitled waiver request, as of August 11th, 2025, amended October 14th, 2025, amended October 24th, 2025. And I see a nod in agreement by Mr. Engler, so we're all set on that. And starting with the first waiver request, section 8.5.5.1, requirement is ground floors of buildings which front on streets shall be reserved for non-residential uses. Any opposition or questions to that? Hearing none. Moving on to the second request for waiver, section 8.5.6.1, front building setback, eight-foot minimum, 15-foot maximum. Any questions or objection to that request? Hearing none. Moving on to the next item, section 8.5.6.1, building height maximum, three stories, maximum 38 feet. Any questions or objection to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number four, section 8.5.6.2, building orientation. Buildings shall be placed on the site to define the edges of streets and public spaces constructed to be parallel to the street or public space. Multiple buildings on single lots are permitted. Where multiple buildings exist, to the extent practicable, they shall be arranged to form a grid-like pattern. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing none. Moving on to item number five, section 8.5.6.7, height may be increased up to 48 feet through a special permit by the planning board, and in accordance with section 9.3, to allow for architectural features that add to the building design, and which shall not increase additional living space. Examples of such features include a pinnacle, cupola, a clock tower, a terrace, observation area, and the like. Any questions or objection about that? Hearing none. Moving on to number six, section 8.5.6.9, a fourth story may be added to a building through a special permit by the planning board in accordance with section 9.3. Any questions or objection to that? Hearing none. Item number seven, section 8.5.6.10, a fourth story may be added to a building through a special permit by the planning board in accordance with section 9.3. Any questions or objection to that? Hearing none. Moving on to section 8.5.8, general regulations. The Town of Ashland Design Review Guidelines, dated 2015, are the most recent addition, adopted by the planning board pursuant to the authority granted hereunder, available from the Town of Ashland Planning Department, shall guide the implementation of the standards of this section. All new signs will follow the sign requirements of the commercial B zones, as noted in section 5.3 of this zoning bylaw. Any questions or objections to that? Number nine, section 8.5, hearing nothing, section 8.5.10.5, no driveway or parking lot shall be placed in the portion of a lot that is directly in front of a building as seen from a street, whether or not the building is located in the same lot as the driveway or parking lot, except that a driveway and parking lot may be placed in front of a building that is located in the rear of another building when viewed from a street. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Item number 10, section 5.4.2, buffering between residential and non-residential uses. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 11, section 5.4.3, buffer areas. Any objections or questions about that one? Hearing nothing. Moving on to item 12, section 5.4.4, parking areas containing eight or more spaces shall contain or be bordered by at least one tree per eight spaces. Such trees shall be, in any case, not further than five feet from the parking cell. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 13, section 5.4.7, special permit to authorize a reduction in authorized plantings. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 14, section 8.5.11, building design standards. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Number 15, section 5.1.4.2, there should be not more than one entrance and one exit from such lots per 200 feet of street frontage or fraction thereof. If necessary, to meet this requirement, uses shall arrange for shared egress. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to item number 16, section 5.1.7, special permit for reduction in parking. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to item number 17, section 5.3.12, signage in downtown commercial districts ADD and CD. Any questions or objection to that? Hearing none. Moving on to section 18, or number 18, section 5.7.3, erosion control. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 19, section 5.8, site alteration special permit. Any objections or questions about that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 20, section 9, administration and procedures. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to item 21, section 9, administration and procedures. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to number 22, section 9, administration and procedures. Any questions or objections to that? Hearing nothing. Moving on to the next, waivers, storm water management, and illicit discharges and connections of the Town of Ashland, chapter 247. We'll put a hold on that. And that includes number, item number 23. And it looks like everything else under that was crossed out. Next item, waivers for wetland protection bylaw and regulations of the Town of Ashland, chapter 280 and chapter 348. We will put a hold on that. And that will include that whole items number, number 26 through 40. And then waivers for storm water management, chapter 343, item number 41. And we'll put a hold on that. And item number 42, waivers for zoning bylaws of the Town of Ashland, chapter 282, continued, section 8.1.4, special permit application required for projects within the floodplain overlay district. Any questions or objections to that? Okay, and that concludes the list of waivers requested. So, that being said, why don't we go to the first item that we have a hold on? And that would be item number 23, the waiver request for chapter 247, storm water management and illicit discharges and connections. And as the, what is proposed by the applicant is that the applicant is requesting a waiver from the entirety of chapter 247. However, the applicant will agree, as a condition to the comprehensive permit, to comply with Article 2, and can be required to submit an illicit discharge statement as an exhibit to the notice of intent. Also, as a condition to the comprehensive permit, that applicant will agree to all requirements relating to chapter 247 as enumerated in waiver list exhibit A. And attached to the submission of, dated October 24th, 2025, is a waiver list exhibit A. Do I need to read that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you need to read the entire exhibit, but for the benefit of people who are looking for these documents online, or maybe haven't seen them, may I just offer a comment, just very briefly?
Please do.
So, between October 14th, which was the last meeting when we discussed these, and the 24th, which is when they were amended again, there was a lot of additional information. So, in between, you know, those two periods, we received some correspondence from the applicant, we received some correspondence from the conservation commission, and there have been some substantive updates. And so, the column of regulation sections that you just read... And so, the column of regulation sections that you just read is accompanied by proposed language clarifying it as well as an explanation. And so, there's, there's a lot of additional materials that are available on the website for people to see to get those explanations. And so, just to preface what you're, what you're getting at here, two things that were, were provided by the applicant were in response to the stormwater regulations. And it was a notation that the applicant will be required to use the NOAA Atlas fourteen precipitation data within the stormwater calculations and its notice of intent filing with the Ashland Conservation Commission, so that was clarified. We also got a clarification with respect to Article Two, illicit discharges. And as you just read, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, to a certain extent, is agreeing to Article Two as clarified in this document. So, I don't think you need to read the whole thing, but you may want to ask if the applicant is so inclined to provide a little update and explanation on these, just to make sure that the board's understanding and the applicant's understanding is consistent.
Very good. Mr. Engler, I do hope you wish to step up to the podium and provide some clarification and explanation, just so we're sure we're all on the same page.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jeff Engler, representing SLOV Ashland, the applicant in this matter. I'm also joined by Eric DeBruel from Bowler and Chris Lucas from Lucas Environmental. They're on Zoom as part of the team, should any more technical questions be raised relative to these waivers. So, I think council did a good job summarizing. Basically, what we're communicating is we understand some of the concerns of the town and the CONCOM, and we're committing to doing some of the important things that they've requested. However, and this is an important distinction, we want those requirements to be codified as a condition in the permit. We do not want to have, we want this waiver, and we are not filing under the local bylaw with the Conservation Commission under any scenario. So, the good news as far as the town goes is we're going to be submitting all this information as requested by CONCOM and to a lesser degree, the town, but it'll be a condition in the permit and not something that will be, we won't be filing under the local bylaw. I don't know if that makes sense.
I mean, I think I understand it. Brian or Ryan, do you have any questions about that?
I don't.
So, we submitted, as council knows, the letter on October twenty-first with a couple proposed conditions. We included waiver list exhibit A. Would defer to council on how that gets, whether that's an exhibit to the decision, whether the language is just extracted and put in as conditions. We, we don't have a strong preference. However, the language gets included, we'll be required to adhere to that language, which I think is the most important thing. So, we, you know, we, we think this is a good strategy and gets the town primarily what it wants in those areas as it relates to three forty or two forty-seven, excuse me. So, I don't know if there's any other questions specific to two forty-seven.
Do we have everything we need on that?
I believe with these updates, the outstanding questions have been addressed and just, if I may, just to boil it down to maybe one sentence, the procedural requirements the applicant's requesting a waiver of, so that they don't have a separate filing, a separate paperwork, and separate process. It's the point of the comprehensive permit. The substantive requirements, almost entirely, if not entirely, they've agreed to comply with.
Okay.
Just administered by this board in this permit.
Okay.
Is that fair?
And they still will have to file via the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent?
Under the Wetland Protection Act, which is state law.
Right.
Right.
Okay, we received a letter from our Stormwater Advisory Commission today in raising some concerns about the, the request by the applicant with respect to one of the one of the laws, and I don't have that letter unfortunately immediately in front of me. There it is. And referencing whether we have the authority to waive the bylaw, Article Two, because it's a federal requirement. But from what I understand you're saying, if we're waiving the bylaw, but they're still going to have to file and do what's required under Article Two. But I guess my question would be, who would then enforce a potential violation? If it, if the local bylaw was waived?
So, let me break it down in a few different ways. Waiving the procedural elements of the bylaw does not mean the bylaw is gone. It just means you're waiving those particular requirements.
Okay.
They also get picked up and incorporated substantively, the performance standards, into your comprehensive permit, and that's a legally enforceable document. Now, there's a little bit of a nuance here because the argument, as I understand it, just reading this now, goes that the bylaw implements federal and state requirements. Well, so those federal and state requirements still exist, and so to the extent the applicant is bound to comply with them, the applicant is bound to comply with them. They don't go away. And so, I, I think we're getting a little bit outside of the scope to talk about, you know, potential violations or non-compliance, because I don't know what that would mean if we ever were faced with it. But suffice it to say, federal and state regulations are enforceable by multiple authorities, and your comprehensive permit is a legally enforceable document. And so, there, there are all kinds of potential remedies if they were ever an issue of non-compliance.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question.
Just a clarification on one thing. I don't know, and maybe someone can clarify, whether or not the Stormwater Advisory Committee had the benefit of all this material when it met and voted. I don't know the answer to that, and maybe it did. But it's possible that the amended materials that we received recently, which are quite extensive, address some of what's in this letter, but I, I don't know the answer to that, just raising that question.
Okay. I'm not sure anybody here tonight knows that, knows that answer. Okay.
Doesn't say when they met.
They met last night.
Oh, they met last night.
But I'm not sure that their agent would have had
Following along.
Would have had the filing that Mr. Engler did on Friday.
Well, we can, if the public hearing ends up remaining open, we can circle back on that on a staff level.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, and further waiver requests on the Wetland Protection Bylaw and Regulations of the Town of Ashland. Do we have that covered in one of the, one of the exhibits and the potential conditions? I don't see that we do, do we? And basically, we're back to where we were originally on this with the applicant requesting a waiver of the local wetlands protection bylaw, but stating that they're going to apply a notice for a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, which would enforce the state and federal wetlands law. Correct?
So, they are obligated to file a notice of intent under the State Wetlands Protection Act separately from this. That's true. I was just checking my notes from the last meeting, and as I recall, we went through each one of these. And I believe by and large, many of these were procedural in nature. And I didn't have any notes where any board members raised objections to any of the particular items. And again, I'll note that there are clarifications and sort of conditions attached to each one of these that the applicant has proposed. And some of them, for example, state that the waiver is to allow the plan to be constructed, you know, as proposed and as reviewed by the board's peer reviewers. And so, they're asking simply just to comply with the approved plan in many of those cases. And so, the list here, I don't know if you want to go down them one by one again, are to address those, the procedural differences, because they're not going to file a separate application under the bylaw, and there are a number of procedural issues associated with that, right? So, all those, they're requesting a waiver of. And then to the extent that there's a performance standard, they're either complying with it or they're asking that it be waived to the extent necessary to construct the plan as proposed. And so, you may want to ask the applicant if they want to add to that, if Mr. Engler wants to clarify in any of those things. I don't want to speak for him. But you'll see that there are a number of red lines in this version where there was a number of more sort of precise changes and explanatory language added to each one of these.
Okay. Mr. Engler, do you want to take the podium again? I just want to ask a question, having heard what our council has discussed. Is that, is that where we are?
You tell me, Mr. Chairman. Are we, are we still talking about number twenty-three as it relates to chapter two forty-seven, or are we
No, we're moving
We're beyond that. We're not talking about two eighty and three forty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so basically, what we did is we removed the, the waiver in its entirety, the first, which was formerly twenty-four, which is not shown on yours.
Correct.
And we took that out, and we've only identified those waivers from the local bylaw to which we need a waiver from. So, by default, anything not included on this list, we will comply with. But in consult with our technical team and Chris Lucas, these waivers, we need, we, we need these provisions waived by the zoning board.
Okay. Brian, Brian, do you want, want us to go through section by section, starting with item number twenty-six, going through thirty-four point one, or thirty-four point, actually going through thirty-four point one to thirty-six? Or are we satisfied with the the explanation of what they're going to do and the conditions that will be imposed upon them in the hearing decision to comply with the wetlands, but not the local wetlands ordinance?
So, how much of a difference is there between the local and the state wetlands ordinances?
Well, I know the local ordinance, for instance, has a, an additional footage requirement that the state doesn't have. I believe there's also certain other more restrictive requirements that the local ordinance has that the state and federal don't have. I mean, we, we had a couple of hearings on that, and frankly, I don't have that right off the top of my head, but there are, there are differences. The local ordinance is more restrictive than the state ordinance, and I think extends the Conservation Commission's authority a little bit further than the state ordinance does.
And so, all of these items, these twenty-six through thirty-four, so are about that?
They're all about the Wetlands Act and for instance, item number twenty-six. They're requesting a waiver from because they, about resource area values, because the project is subject to the resource area values identified with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, otherwise known as WPA.
And so, our town ordinance is stricter?
A little stricter. The next one, number twenty-seven. The bylaw protects the resource areas under the Mass WPA. To a greater degree, protects additional resource areas beyond the act, recognized by the town as significant. And the applicant's explanation is that the resource areas on the site are protected appropriately and adequately under the Wetlands Protection Act. The additional protections under the local bylaw are extraneous as the existing resources will be protection under the Wetland Protection Act. And the outcome will be subject to all governing terms and regulations under the Mass WPA, but will not be subject to any regulations under Ashland Code two eighty as it relates to two eighty dash two. The Conservation Commission will have statutory authority within their review of the application under the Wetland Protection Act and not the local bylaw. So, in substance, what I guess the applicant is suggesting is that there is protection for the town under the state and federal agencies, and the CONCOM has the authority to deal with that, but that the local Ashland bylaw is more restrictive, and they want that waived.
And so, if we go through these and say that we're not going to grant a waiver for these so that the Town Conservation Committee can impose their authority over this project, that then becomes a sticking point, and we go to court? Is that how it works?
Well, I don't want to speak on behalf of the, the applicant, but I know the applicant at previous hearings has made it clear that these, this waiver on this was required in order for them to be able to build the project. If I, correct me if I've misstated.
Yes, I mean, some of them are performance standards, Mr. Chairman. Some of them are a little bit more procedural in this case, so it's a combination thereof. But I, I would, I would make one distinction to something that you said, we're not waiving the bylaw in its entirety. We're just waiving these
I understand, certain sections.
These provisions. The rest of it still stands and will still adhere to. But for a number of reasons, and we can get into them if you want, we, we can't, some of these, we, we just can't meet based on the plans that you guys have already reviewed and approved and been peer reviewed. So, to hold this is, is, is counterintuitive to So, to hold this is, is, is counterintuitive to all the discussions that we've had over the last 10 months. Some of them are procedural, but I, so, I'll stop talking.
Could you just give us a couple of examples of the ones you couldn't meet, the town by law, but you can meet the state?
I'm, I'm going to turn to my technical team.
Sure.
To Chris, to talk about ones that we can't meet. Just, Chris, now, you don't have to go through the whole list, but a couple as an example.
Sure. And for the record, my name is Chris Lucas with Lucas Environmental, professional wetland scientist and registered professional soil scientist. For example, Chairman, you referenced number 26, 280-1. The by law includes additional resource area values of erosion and sedimentation control and water quality. For example, those additional values that they've added could, could potentially be an impact to the overall project design. The by law doesn't have specific metrics to that, so it's a very subjective evaluation, which is a concern for the project. Additionally, for this particular one, the project fully complies with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards and a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or the NIPD SWIP, will be required. That more than adequately, in our opinion, protects the, the values here on the federal level, as well as we'll have to address water quality and erosion and sedimentation control under the Mass Wetland Protection Act. So, there's a state and federal protection here. We don't want to get into a subjective issue when there are no metrics for erosion control and water quality under the local by law. Number 27 is pretty much the same thing, that's the same issue there. Number 28, 280-4. B, that's regarding the 25-foot no disturb zone. We're requesting a waiver from working in that, because this project is well into the 25-foot, it's developed, it's disturbed. We really, we can't make this project work without working in the 25-foot no disturb zone, because of the nature of the existing conditions and how we're tying into the existing pipes in there and the existing wall and everything else. So, there are a couple others similar to that, which we've requested waivers for. Those are the two significant ones we'd have an issue with, with, you know, the project being compliant with those standards. The other ones that we have in here, as, as Jeff indicated, are more procedural questions, procedural issues that we've requested waivers from. Happy to get into more detail, but that, that would be a general summary of where we're at with the waivers for the wetlands.
So, I don't know who to ask this of, but, so the state protections will still be in place, it's just the town by laws that won't be in place. And who feels that we're adequately protected?
The state.
The state. Because I know that the Conservation Committee sent us a bunch of emails about why they should have jurisdiction on this, but I understand why you don't want that, or at least on the examples you gave, where you're already in the 25-foot no disturb zone. So, it's, I'm not a wetland scientist, but it's pretty confusing for me, so I guess I understand why you don't.
I mean, the performance standard ones, I think, are pretty easy. The 25-foot, we, we can't adhere to that. I mean, we just, based on the plan sets that have been peer reviewed and submitted, we're within those setbacks. So, to not grant those waivers is tantamount to not approving the project.
When you say you're in, is this like the wall along the river?
The disturbed areas, it's already disturbed. I mean, this isn't pristine woods, this is a highly disturbed contaminated site that we're improving, so, but by the letter of the by law, we're not complying with it, because we're working in that 25-foot no disturb. So, those are some, you know, specific examples. Also, under 40B, we don't deal in subjectivity, we deal in specific performance standards. And some of these by laws are very subjective relative to what we can do or not do. And that's, I mean, I, I don't want to get into a whole dissertation, but 40B was created largely because towns had such restrictive local by laws that housing is not being developed in Massachusetts, and, and we're suffering the consequences of that as a Commonwealth. So, 40B was enacted to allow the zoning board, you know, to sit in place of local permit granting authorities and grant a comprehensive permit, and we still have to adhere to all of the Mass DEP standards, which we will adhere to, and then some. There's additional things that we're committing to that we've submitted, so it's not just a blanket waiver, it's just these specific provisions. So, we feel very strongly, we think we've been reasonably agreeable throughout the public hearing to most of what the board has requested, but as it relates to the waivers that you're holding in your hand, we really need those to be granted to proceed with the plans as we've discussed over the last 10 months.
So, if you don't mind, John.
Go ahead.
I've noticed we have some conservation guys in the room, and would it be weird to ask them to give their two cents on why they think they should still have this over the state, over the state jurisdiction stuff? Can we do that?
Well, certainly, they have a right to talk during public comment period, absolutely.
Well, I think we can do it. Can we do it now, counsel? Do it when you want to open it to members of the public. We usually start with town officials, if they're inclined to speak.
I don't know if they are, but would either of you gentlemen like to speak as to why you think the town Conservation Committee should still be involved in this over the state?
Do you want us to wait for a public comment?
I wouldn't mind if you did it now while we're in the middle of this, if you guys don't mind, I know you just, you know.
Will you bring these microphones on up there?
Yeah. I can, I can choke up on it.
Good evening. Gene Crouch, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. We've requested that these not be waived. There are a lot of issues associated with wetlands in general, both the state law and the by law. We have not reviewed anything to do with this project to date, which is why we're saying, give us the chance to look at it. The fact that they're saying that they can't build this project because of the by law makes no sense to me at all. Regarding work in the 25-foot no disturb zone, I don't think we've ever designed a project that had work in the 25-foot no disturb zone. There are ways to provide mitigation for that work. They're saying that it's going to kill the project, I just don't believe that. Another question I have for you, on the stormwater issues, it sounds like you're basically adopting the stormwater regulations for the town's by law into the conditions for the comprehensive permit, is that correct? Or at least some of them?
Basically.
You want me to answer?
Yes, if you would.
Basically.
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, so, basi, there is no, they're not, you're not going to allow the stormwater by law to exist and for the Conservation Commission to rule on it or review it and issue a permit. Who's going to enforce that? We won't be able to enforce that, because we didn't issue a permit under it. Does that mean that the ZBA is going to be the enforcing agent for the stormwater by law? Or the stormwater aspects of the by law that are included?
I believe it would be the state EPA.
No, it wouldn't be, because it's a by law.
I take it back, all right.
Counsel?
We, we covered this, I think, a little bit earlier. Your comprehensive permit is a legally enforceable document, and so, any conditions that are incorporated in that, that the applicant and the project have to comply with, are enforceable through the comprehensive permit. Just because it's not, in this hypothetical, administered by the Conservation Commission, doesn't mean it's not legally enforceable at all. It's just enforceable through this board. And again, fundamentally, that's what a comprehensive permit is. This board serves as a superboard, right? And stands in the shoes of all local authorities. And so, that's true for local Board of Health regulations, it's true for Planning Board regulations, all the other regulations that we've discussed throughout the process, this board is now the authority under those bylaws.
So, if the town Conservation Committee isn't overseeing the project, who is overseeing the project from a conservation point of view?
So, primarily, this board is the point of contact, you're the permit granting authority, but all of the board's professional staff that work for the board oversees the project. So, you've had it extensively peer reviewed by multiple professionals. As the project proceeds, those professionals work with the applicant's team, and there are all kinds of reports, there are site visits and inspections that occur through, I mean, this is when the project is underway.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, and, right, that's what I assumed.
Yeah.
And so, all those people are involved in the day-to-day review of reports that are submitted, the SWIPs, all those other things that come in, those are reviewed by that team. So, it's not you, and it's not John, and it's not me, we're not professional, I'm assuming.
I'm not.
We're not professionals capable of performing that task. And so, we, at the applicant's expense, have professionals that are retained to perform that service.
So, the guys that are on our team, paid for by the builder, and they oversee what's going on? And so, it's not our local Conservation Committee overseeing what's going on, but some paid professionals who specialize in this?
Yes, listen, it, this doesn't happen sort of in the dark or in a vacuum. These projects are heavily regulated projects. You have multiple state agencies involved, you have town agencies involved, and so, these are supervised from the moment the first vehicle shows up, and even before that. So, just to give you an example, one of the standard conditions that we put in pretty much every decision, you know, is a, a construction management plan needs to be filed. And so, the applicant is going to have to prepare that and submit it, and it's going to describe everything. Where's the staging going to be? What are the vehicle routes? Where are the details going to be from the police? I mean, all those details go in that, and then we monitor for compliance with that. And so, it's no different with performance standards, all the conditions that are in here are going to be overseen by a town official or someone, some professional person supporting that town official. So, for example, after this process, you issue the comprehensive permit, they have to go to the state, get final approval, they have to come back with final plan sets that need to meet our approval, and then they have to pull a building permit. And so, right there, you've got the building official who's going to be reviewing the final plan sets for compliance with the permit. If they don't comply, they don't get the permit, simple as that. And then, once the construction is underway, all that gets supervised and reviewed on a regular basis, and that, and things like this is included in that process.
Right. And so, Mr. Crouch, you don't feel that these other organizations have the ability to do it, or can do it worse or better than you?
My question was, who is going to do it? Because the way the process works now, if we issue a permit and there's a violation, it comes back to us, and we look at it, we discuss it, we go to the, the homeowner, the applicant, whoever, landowner, and we get resolution to the problem. If we're not the issuing authority, we're not going to do that.
Right, I don't think you're expected to, because I believe the state's.
Well, I just want to make sure that you may have to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
You, the ZBA, will have to become the enforcing authority here, regardless of the staff that goes out and does the data collection.
But Brian, if I may, Mr. through the chair, it's not Brian or John, it's Hancock Engineering, who you guys can have as a reviewer to make sure that the stormwater management plan, as we proposed, is being built and installed in accordance to the plans. So, the representation that it's, with all due respect, you all making technical decisions that you don't have the wherewithal to make, that's not.
That's not accurate. I'm quite confident that counsel will draft a decision so that it could be Hancock Engineering. Bob Mishaw, as a traffic engineering, will be looking. Your building inspector will be heavily involved to make sure the plans comply, so that there's all sorts, it's not easy for us, this, a representation that, oh, we get the comp permit, and it's the Wild West. No, we have a lot of performance measures, and you guys, and when I say you guys, I mean the town, have the power of both the building permit and the occupancy permit, so that if we're not complying with the conditions in the permit, we don't get those, we're screwed. So, we really, you know, have to go carefully through the conditions, and we'll talk later in this public hearing about reviewing the draft, so that it's, you know, fair and the timing and everything is appropriate. But the representation that it's under your purview is, it's really not a big deal, because you're going to have technical experts that have the wherewithal to make that review. And if I may, one other thing, the representation, again, that we, the CONCOM has not seen anything from us is disappointing, because we twice offered to go before them on an informal basis, and we're refused both times, just for the record.
Yeah, because you didn't have the thing. I understand that part, but so, I don't understand why the town Conservation Committee wants to be disinvolved in a project that already has supervisors that the town's paying for, and the state is overseeing, if I understood.
No, the state is not overseeing this.
There's no state involvement?
No. Well, they're involved, but if there's an enforcement action that comes into the state, they call us. They don't come out and look at it themselves. We're enforcing the state law, and we will do that. That is not going away, absolutely. But there are differences between our by law and the state law, and we will not be administering those differences.
But I think there's a difference between a regular building permit here in town and a comprehensive permit for a 40B project. And I think that's where I get confused, why you guys want to be the authority on it for a comprehensive permit.
We're just saying, we have a, the, the town voted to create this by law.
Yeah, but the state's kind of bypassing all that stuff, you know?
I know.
Yeah.
Which I, I find, I find a problem, that we have decided this is important to us, and the state said, well, no, it's not important, we're going to take it away from you.
I agree with you on that, and maybe someday in the voting booth, we'll fix it, but I don't understand why the town Conservation Committee wants to be involved in something that's already being overseen by paid professionals.
But they don't have, the paid professionals are not going to go to issue a fine, because they don't have the authority to do that. We have the authority to do that if we see something wrong. They would come to us and say, this isn't being done right, and we would say, fine, we'll take it from here.
Uh, I think, attorney, please.
We still have that authority.
Yes.
Well, they, you do, yes.
The authority.
And as I stated earlier, we, we subsume all those roles as the, you, not we. You subsume as a board, all those roles.
Yes.
As the Board of Health, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, any local jurisdiction or agency becomes run through this board. That doesn't mean you personally go out and check a boring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But our professionals report to us ultimately, and our professional staff, our full-time staff, you're the building inspector, for example. And then, those people make decisions based on that, and they still have all those tools. Those tools don't go away.
Yeah.
And so, this is true with every 40B that's ever been permitted in the state of Massachusetts. So, I just don't want the board to get the impression that somehow by the Conservation Commission not administering the permit, that we've lost the ability to enforce the permit. We still have that.
Yeah. All right. I just, I understand that you guys do good work in town, and I'm not arguing about that, I just don't understand why you want to be in this.
Well, this is, this is what we do. This is what we do for every other project in town.
Every other.
And now, it's being taken away for this particular project.
40B, yeah.
Why, why should that be?
40B.
It's the law.
It's the law.
Again.
And we're going around in circles on this, and I understand your position, and you've articulated it very well, but we're not going to solve the problem of the underlying legislation of 40B and what authority it gives the board or doesn't give the board. The question is, do we want to waive the local ordinances, regulations, or not? And I appreciate your telling us a couple of very specific things that the CONCOM would be involved in, that you're not going to be involved in if there's a comprehensive permit granted.
Right.
And, you know, that, that's an argument that has been made and should be made in the future in another forum, I think, by people with more authority than us, we have. But I think, Brian, are you sort of?
Yeah.
Finished where you, where you are on this?
Yeah, I think I understand, and I appreciate you guys doing what you do. Mr. Angler?
Mr. Crouch?
Thank you.
Our, our technical team just has a couple points that I think might be helpful. So, Eric or Chris, fire away on some of the discussion real quick.
Sure. For the record, Eric DeBrul with Baller Engineering, civil engineer, professional engineer. I just want to clarify, I think it's fully understood, we're not trying to. Uh, I just wanna, to clarify, I think it's fully understood, uh, we're not trying to get out of any of the, the regulations at the state level. Uh, you know, we're, we're going to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, so much of, you know, what, what the gentleman there want, is gonna wanna see, we're gonna be filing and, and have that dialogue with a notice of intent application. They'll go before them, they'll be looking at storm waters as they do. Um, so hopefully, that gives the, the zoning board some additional comforts, uh, that the Conservation Commission is gonna have their, their bite of the apple, if you will, on, on much of what's being discussed. Just, we just don't obviously wanna file the local application, as that's what the comp permit is, is exactly for, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Chris, you have anything, or?
Uh, again, Chris Lucas. Uh, the only thing I'll add to that, uh, you know, the, the Conservation Commission will have the right to impose their conditions with the notice of intent we file under the Wetland Protection Act, which will give them authority to be on the site. So if they see something that they're not comfortable with, they can always notify the ZBA and other staff, and there can be a discussion. Um, additionally, Mass DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, um, has oversight of the notice of intent through the Wetland Protection Act. Uh, as Mr. Crouch said, they typically will contact the Conservation Commission if there's an issue, but Mass DEP does have the right to intervene if they so choose, independent of the Conservation Commission, so, um. So, th- there's plenty of oversight between the Conservation Commission and Mass DEP if needed, um, for the, for the project, in addition to all the other folks involved that'll be overseeing this project when it goes to construction. Thank you.
If I could just say a few more things, uh, Mr. Lucas is correct, that the DEP does have authority and may come out. Typically, it's gonna be for a really big project or a really big violation, that's when they get involved. And only then would they get involved. But the other point was made that there's a peer reviewer to do oversight of the construction and so forth, Hancock and, and, uh, Mishaw. Um, I, I would suggest, I would check their contracts, because I'm sure their work is done. And they're not under contract to do, uh, uh, construction oversight. So, you're gonna need to have construction oversight built into your, your permit, so that you can then have the right to go out and hire someone to do that work, because right now, you don't have that authority.
Counsel? That is a standard condition of the comprehensive permit.
Is it?
It, it will be.
Oh, okay.
And all the comprehensive permits that I write.
Alright. Because we have the authority to go out and, and hire peer review. It's written into state law and our bylaw. And, you know, without the bylaw, we don't have that. Well, at least not the bylaw.
So, Mr. Crouch is correct, that there are two phases. So, the peer review, public hearing phase would conclude. But when the comprehensive permit issues, there's a condition that I write, that's included in there, that gives us the authority to do those things post permitting. And so, we enter into a new, um, engagement for that purpose.
So, there's still somebody watching the, the show going?
Somebody of our choosing that we've qualified and selected, yes.
That they're paying for.
I think that's important, because a project of this size is gonna be a lot of work to watch it, to make sure things are being done properly. And I don't know that our staff, our town staff, has the ability to put that much time into one single project. And we've got potentially three projects of this magnitude.
Well aware, right. But, but according to attorney winners, we, we have people that we're going to hire. Well, that the builder is gonna hire on our team to oversee them.
I think you should hire them to work for the town, and the builder would pay for it.
Yeah, that's-
That way, they're reporting to you and not to him.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Just to clarify, the engagement is with the town, and they report to us. Their duty of loyalty is to the town.
Right. That's the way it should be.
The expenses, um, are paid through what we call 53G account that the applicant funds.
Okay.
And then, we draw that payment. And also, just one clarification, or, or maybe, um, just stating something explicitly that was implied. Many towns don't have the ability to supervise a project of this magnitude.
Yeah.
And so, it is the, the, the sort of standard, right? The standard operating procedure to engage, uh, professional services for these purposes. Uh, many towns may have a building department of one, a- and they're receiving every building permit application, doing the roughens, doing, you know, doing everything. So, they, you know, it's not uncommon at all for a town to engage outside firms to perform this service. And so, we would do just that.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you, I guess I'm done.
Thank you for your help, Mr. Crouch.
Appreciate it.
Okay, let's, going back to the waiver list that we were working on, starting with item number twenty-six. And let's go through item number... Looks like forty, uh, section three, four, eight, dash, four. Any further questions or objections to any of those items?
Not from me.
And Ryan?
Uh, yes, just one. Um, similar to what we discussed, I believe, on sixty-one waverly. I, I, I would, I would think it might be a, a good condition to put in, which would simply say that they'll use, you know, good faith, um, uh, reasonable efforts to comply with the local zoning. I'm sorry, with the local, um, uh, bylaws as it relates to wetlands, et cetera.
So, noted, and when, um, we get to the final drafting phase, I, I will try to, um, honor that request as much as possible. It's difficult, because when you have a performance standard that we know they can't comply with, because just the way the project is designed, then no amount of good faith will change that, right? And so, in some cases, it'll make sense, and others, it won't. And so, I'll do my best to weave that in, to the extent it's appropriate to do so, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I, I think it, it just, it, it will further encourage the dialogue with, uh, ConCom, ConCom, as we discussed a moment ago, so.
I understand.
Anything further? Okay.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay, I have no objections or questions. So, I believe we have, in our process, we have three yeses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, and then, the last items, number forty-one, which is a waiver requested from stormwater management regulations in the entirety of chapter three, forty-three. That was covered by one of the, um, one of the addendums, wasn't it, or exhibits?
Exhibit B.
Mm-hmm. And there is proposed language that the applicant submitted, um, as to a condition of that effect. So, we have both of those things on record.
Okay. Any questions or objection about that?
No.
Nope. Brian, Brian, Brian?
I did have one, uh, it's kind of a technical question, but one of the strikes on that exhibit B, uh, was under post-development stormwater management criteria. It was the paragraph beginning, no untreated discharges was struck. I, I'm just, you know, wondering from a practical standpoint, what is the necessity for striking that, that particular language from, uh, the incorporated exhibit?
Mr. Engler?
Eric, can you, Eric, can you handle that one?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so the intent there is, um, you know, un- under the regulations, that would be re- required. Um, but effectively, this site, as you recall, is essentially in a, in a bowl. You know, we've got environmental issues with the soils, the river is actually above us. Um, so we're, from a stormwater perspective, it's extraordinarily challenged and in a unique site. Um, and so, there are, all of our stormwater discharges are gonna be treated, um, they're gonna make improvements then, over what's out there today. And the language always goes back, what's maximum extent practicable from the stormwater state standards. Uh, and then, through the peer review, obviously, with, with Hancock, they extensively reviewed that, gave a lot of feedback in multiple working sessions. You know, they, they got to the point where they're comfortable that the stormwater design, from that standpoint, is, is meeting, um, the state standards from the max extent practicable. While we struck it out, was just, we didn't want any, uh, we didn't want any confusion or, you know, gray areas for discussion when we're before the, the commission, whether or not it's meeting a max extent practicable. Essentially, what we're asking to be approved is, is well, is peer reviewed and, and, and the record plans that we'll s- submit, that Hancock's peer reviewed. Uh, so hopefully, that kind of gave you a little context behind it. Uh, but if you got additional questions, certainly.
May, may I just offer a clarification?
Yes, please.
And maybe the, the gentleman can correct me, because I am no stormwater professional. But, uh, the, the stormwater management guidelines, um, treat new development and redevelopment differently. And so, I believe, was it, is it standard seven, uh, where that language comes from for redevelopment, to the maximum extent practicable? Um, and that's a recognition that it's already a developed site, and so, it, it needs to improve it. Um, and so, I think that's why there's a little bit of a delta there, the difference between those two things. Is, am I in the right universe there, or?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay. And I think item forty-one and forty-two, with the last two, um, having any further discussion, questions, objections to either of those two?
No, none from me.
None from me either.
And none from me. Okay. That concludes going through the list of waivers. Shall we open this up for public comment at this point? Now, with this, I don't think we're going to, we're not going to close the public hearing tonight. That was the plan, right? Mr. Engler has been kind enough to give us an extension of time, so we can continue to converse with him if we have questions going forward.
Yep, based on, um, this discussion tonight, I'm comfortable giving an extension. Um, I think, you guys know better than I do, we actually are through Halloween, maybe. So, I gotta get that letter submitted tomorrow. Um, you know, I, I probably will do it till, like, December first and give us another month, um, because it's my understanding and informal discussions with this group. I think it benefits both of us to keep the public hearing open, as we're talking about, uh, a draft decision. Should anything come up and we need to submit anything, I hopeful the record is complete. But, um, you know, I think, uh, I'm comfortable with that.
Good. Do I have public comment now?
Well, in light of that, Mr. Chairman, you, I guess, have two options, since there'll be a further night of the public hearing, at least. And it, it's obviously entirely up to the board. It's nine twenty-three.
But we can withhold public comment until the next hearing, when we actually close the public hearing.
Required to have public comment every single night.
Okay.
But you are required to take public comment.
Mm-hmm. I think we should just do it. A lot of people have waited this long.
It's, it's entirely up to the board, defer to you.
There aren't too many people here.
Yeah. Seems like we could get it through it. How many?
Well, but if the hearing isn't closed, we theoretically would have to take public comment the next time. Yeah, why don't we wait for public comment till the next time?
Yeah, okay.
There's really, there's really no such thing as closing the public comment without closing the public hearing. So, public comment is still open, as long as the public hearing is still open.
Correct.
Unless you rule otherwise, but that's, that's the default. As long as the hearing is open, public comment is-
Okay, well, we've already heard public comment, I think, probably for Mr. Crouch, unless he has something additional to add. Why don't we, why don't we take public comment from anybody that's online that wishes to be heard? Please, raise your hand. Going once. Going twice.
John raised your hand.
Did she? Okay.
Yeah, you can't see it.
It's cut off on that one.
Yeah.
But it's, you can see it on this one.
See it up there, okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't show on that monitor.
That's why I wasn't sure you were saying, and it's like, interesting. Oh, well. Ms. Gunfrady, you're, you're up.
Okay, thank you very much, Joan Gunfrady, One Shore Road, speaking as an independent individual. I'm on the Historical Commission. Um, I have a couple of comments. Um, one, um, it was my understanding, um, if the, if the building was over seventy feet high, that they have to meet high-rise safety concerns. And looking at the renderings that were just, the dimensions that were just added to the renderings, I see that there is dimensions of seventy feet, six inches. So, I'm wondering if that is applicable?
I don't know. I mean, that would be a question for, for our building department, but also for the applicant's engineering team.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
But will you check, please? Somebody check.
If, if it's the board's wish, we could, we could note that and find out.
And find out, get the answer for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have concerns with, um, putting children in a building that's six, six stories high, and that's not to, to safety standards. Um, the second question I have is, um, well, concern that I have is, um, if, if I understood correctly, um, the ConCom is one of the only boards, other than the ZBA, basically, that has any oversight, lo- local oversight for our bylaws over this project. And it seems like that just got waived, basically. I'm not, I'm not saying it's technically done or anything like that, but it sounds like that conversation was just, just basically, um, even though Mr. Crouch gave, I thought, some good reasons why they should continue, they should continue to have, um, say, over the local bylaws. Um, it sounds like the ZBA is heading in the direction of not, of not having that. Um, I would like to say that I would strongly appreciate you relooking at that. Um, and, um, thirdly, um, I sent in several requests for conditions that I hope you will take under consideration. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, that will close public comment for this evening. Um, the next scheduled hearing date would be November eighteenth. Does that work for you, Mr. Engler? The eleventh, which would be the normal date, as that guy's say-
Yep, a- and I, l- l- let us, let me save Jasmine and counsel a little effort. I'm not sure where that seventy foot, six inches is coming from. This will not be a high-rise building. Um, it will be built, um, not in that conformance, and it will be probably one of the safest buildings in the town of Ashland when it's done. So, any representation, otherwise, I, I would disagree with, but it will most certainly not be a high-rise building.
Okay. We have a motion to continue the hearing to November eighteenth. That's-
Can I ask just one question? So, I, I don't think I have any homework for the hearing. But is, what, what is the next steps relative to the draft decision? Will that be something that'll be shared, or will we, I just get that the night of the hearing, or how, how are we gonna proceed? Because some, some of the techni- I mean, listen, I've looked at a million, but the technical stuff, you know, I obviously want our team to look at. We wanna make sure, just sometimes the timing of things gets a little wonky. Not that we're trying to obfuscate our responsibility, but when it's asked for, it might not make logical sense. So, it's that kind of stuff. I trust the board and council that the conditions will be, you know, on the up and up. But it's just that kind of stuff to make sure that the decision works for everybody and is, you know, co- consistent with standard building practices. So, um, I'm just curious as to the board's intent relative to sharing a draft decision with us.
I would defer to council on that, but normal practices.
Uh, so, I, I will follow the board's lead on this, but my recommendation, uh, would be that, um, as soon as the draft is, is ready to be shared, um, that you authorize me to share it, um, because of the, the timing of all of this is important. It takes, it's, it's a long document, and it's, it's a complicated document. And the applicant needs a, a fair chance to review it. Um, that draft exists. Uh, it's been reviewed by our peer reviewers. It's been reviewed partially by my office. We're finishing that up, and we're gonna incorporate the waivers. Um, so, I, I hate to make promises, but we hope to get it out in the very near future. And my intent, my aspirational intent would be, um, prior to the next time we meet, um, so that we can begin that process in earnest.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Yes.
And, Ryan, does that work for you?
It does.
Okay, very good. Then, we now ready for a motion to- Then, we now ready for a motion to continue the hearing to November 18?
Appears so.
So moved, 7:00 P.M.
Is there a...
Seconded.
Aye, John Dufeth, then vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Very good. This matter is continued then. Next item on the agenda is meeting minutes, but we do not have a draft available as yet. So we will table that till our next meeting. And staff updates and administrative matters. Jasmine, anything to take up with that?
Not at this time.
Bright answer, thank you. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Dufeth, then vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Good, thank you, Ron. I thought you didn't want to adjourn there.
I, I was, usually Stuart goes in between me and Brian.
You're right. Sorry about that. Okay, very good. Thank you all, everybody. Thank you, WACCA.
Thank you.